So. We need to order taking motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda minutes.
Uh, we'll second that.
Moving second, no further discussion, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. Steve, your first one on the agenda today.
Sure, right here?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, thanks for having me back. Uh, this is about the triathlon, um, and this is actually our fifth year of doing this. So I, I brought a flyer for all the people that want to sign up here today and then in the meeting. But, uh, it's going good. Again, for signups, we have, uh, we're nearly at seventy. And I think our farthest participant this year is, uh, New Mexico, Albuquerque, New Mexico. Uh, last year we had someone from Ireland sign up, um, for the race. So it's, it's pretty amazing how many people we get to come to our county and, uh, they always have a lot of positive comments also when they're, when on their bike rides out to Ochilla and have good things to say. But yeah, just here to ask, uh, support. Again, uh, sheriff's office does a great job with traffic control and roads department. We've asked if they can fix any potholes and stuff on our, on our, uh, bike ride. Just make sure that's safe for the riders. Um, but that's really about it. Unless you got some questions for me?
No, you've got this pretty well set up, I think, and I, I'll thank you again for doing it for the community. It's a good deal. I mean, it's, I sure appreciate something the county appreciates it too. They spend some money here and they have a good time, so.
It's good to bring them all from all over the place and see what's here.
Uh, last year we had, uh, a lot of, uh, people from the eleven thirty-third, uh, army and they're planning on coming back again.
Okay.
Uh, some of the participants actually wore full gear, uh, when they ran their five K run. Um, some of them had like forty pound rucksacks complete the run. So it was very inspirational. There was a fireman from, uh, Minneapolis. I think he's planning on coming down again. He also had, uh, the full gear on when he did his five K, so. But I appreciate your time and yeah, I don't know if there's anything you guys have for questions.
We'll be sure to get you some participants here before they, yep, get them signed up.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it, Steve. Thank you. All right, Rich.
Um, we're gonna be doing a pipe project here this week, um, Mallard, around Mallard and three fortieth. One of those smaller ones that we've got on that TIF list. Um, there's a grant survey online for that bridge on Dogwood. The, the grant, uh, committee wants people to fill out if we can get ahold of it. It's just, uh, it's a survey to show local support for the project. We're pretty confident we'll get the grant money, but it's nice to have this public input, this public buy-in for replacing these bridges. So that's on our website and we've sent emails out, I think, to you guys too, if you guys know. People you know in the area, we've tried to hit some of the businesses and some of the, you know, the city of Joyce and things like that to try to see if they would kind of fan this email out too. So it's, it's for everybody. And then, uh, we've been taking applications for our open positions. It's been spotty for qualifications, but we'll still keep taking them, so. The only other thing I have on, on the agenda is the, the utility permit applications for worthwhile wind and worthwhile solar. Normally I don't bring, uh, utility applications into the board because most of the time the utilities are considered public utilities that are just usually replacing something or improving something. But these are what we consider more a private utility, similar to when we put the, when that, not necessarily similar to it, but a different type of situation where it's number one is a private utility. Second, like when we did the, the, the gas line on one oh five, that was kind of a, a new install type routing thing. So we wanted the board, you guys have the authority to approve or disapprove any of them. But I think in the past, you guys have been okay with just existing utilities and me approving them and, and going through. But this one's a little different situation. So they just want to be boring. A couple of different, uh, lines underneath, um, I don't remember which highway it is now. Four hundred and sixty-fifth street, one of war two lines, just conduits for now. They won't be, they, they won't be open conduit or they'll be just empty conduits until they figure out something else. And I know that there's some things going on with that. But with the information I have in my office as far as permitting goes, I recommend the approval of the permits, but you guys have the final authority on whether or not you want to continue or hold off until a later date.
Is individual for wind and solar?
I believe so, yep. One's for wind, one's for solar. And I don't know if I forwarded you guys a copy of them or not. I probably didn't, but.
You didn't send us anything.
I'm sorry. They're just, they're just a typical bore underneath the roadway. And if you got any questions, I think there's representatives here for Invenergy.
Uh, Rich, I appreciate you bringing us to us just because of the situation we're in with, with worthwhile wind and solar. Uh, however, my thought is I don't think we should approve this yet, being as we're in litigation on that wind farm. That's my opinion until, until we get, uh, our appeal process over with. I don't think we're, we need to be even discussing any applications. I don't personally, I'm gonna be a dissenting vote no until I hear what our appeal says.
So the solar would be separate. There's been no issues on that period.
There's true. There's one solar application, one wind.
There's no lawsuits pending on that, no nothing pending on that.
And for the time being, they're just empty conduits that are gonna be bored into the roads.
Is, is there solar going up in the county?
As far as I know, yep.
Can you answer that for me?
Yeah, we can. Um, so Isaac Lam, project manager for both worthwhile wind and worthwhile solar. Um, thanks to the board for having us. Um, yeah, so we, we work for Invenergy, but we represent, you know, worthwhile wind and worthwhile solar. Um, but yeah, the solar project, we, uh, it's called officially worthwhile, uh, West Solar. Um, it, we received our, uh, permit from the Iowa Utilities Board, Iowa Utilities Commission now, um, back in twenty nineteen for that project. Um, we're moving forward with that one as well. For both the wind and for the solar projects, we started construction, uh, two, two weeks ago, um, installing some of these underground conduits and bores, um, that, that we're also applying for, for the, the wind project. Um, and so we installed a couple of those on some of our private landowners ground with, with, under the easements that we have. And, um, for the wind project specifically, you know, we are with the, the lawsuit, um, you know, when last, uh, in late twenty-four, um, last year, you know, we, we are planning to still move forward with construction within Silver Lake and Bristol townships. But then, you know, we would still need to work with, with you guys and we are still willing to work with you guys for building in Heartland and Brookfield, um, uh, townships for, for the, a larger, um, for a wind project that would, you know, have written rules and restrictions and, um, you know, we want to look forward to that because of all the landowners within those townships that would be either missing out on the opportunity or would have, um, lesser setbacks essentially if, if we weren't able to utilize all, uh, forty thousand acres of the land that we have signed up versus a smaller project within the Silver Lake and Bristol townships. But yeah, today it's just the underground conduit lines for, but one for the wind, one for the solar. You know, we're hoping to move forward with both of those projects. And, you know, start construction, uh, well, we started construction, you know, two weeks ago, but we want to continue into operations as soon as even next year. So that's the, that's the project right now.
What, what township is these bores in?
I believe Silver Lake.
Yeah, I can't remember the.
Why would you keep boring in the art limit at this time considering our litigation with the Iowa Supreme Court?
So Silver Lake, um, is the formerly unzoned, one of the formerly unzoned townships, right? And so because of the, the lawsuit of, you know, last year, the court was very decisive and, and, um, you know, we are moving, we wanted to move forward with construction there. But then, you know, with the appeal, we, we are still, you know, taking the risk of just moving forward with it too.
Yeah, Brett Dublinsky, I'm outside counsel for, for Invenergy for the worthwhile wind and solar projects. Let me just start. Supervisor Smaby is, is correct, right? The wind and the solar are totally different, uh, to my understanding. The, the solar has never been at issue. It certainly is not part of the lawsuit. All the permitting on it was done some time ago. So at the very, the very least, we would ask you to, to conceptually separate the, the two bores. On the wind, uh, I understand the concern about this being in litigation, being at the Iowa Supreme Court. That does not automatically stay the district court decision. There has been no stay requested and no stay obtained. So the current law is the district court decision, which says that we can go forward, uh, under the terms that would have been in existence prior to the moratorium and the amendments. And so in that case, particularly in the unzoned areas, uh, we think that that lower court decision gives us the authority to go forward until, uh, we're told otherwise by a higher court. But right now there's no stay of that opinion. So that's of full force and effect. And we would certainly hope that, uh, the, the board would honor that opinion. And this is generally a ministerial permit, pretty straightforward. It's no different than, uh, crossing permits that are routinely granted. And so we would certainly, uh, appreciate the approval for both so we can keep doing as much, uh, work as we can. But at the very least, if we can separate out the solar from the dispute over the wind and keep that one, uh, moving, that would be appreciated.
I have no, I have no problem with separating them on. I think that's what we, we'll do it whether somebody wants to make a motion or not, but I will at that point. First of all, I want to thank all you guys for coming in. I know each and every one of you, I've pretty much heard from every one of you in favor of this project. Sue, I know where you stand. Um, I'm not sure if anybody out there against this, but these guys have been patiently waiting for years. And I think we need to work with these people too, and we haven't done that.
I guess my opinion is I agree with AJ because it is in litigation to the Supreme Court. The appeal was done. And we got this agenda right before dinner on Friday. I was traveling all day long. I did not get a chance and I'm not gonna make a decision for that thing, even though I think we can separate, separate the solar out of it until I talk to our lawyer, Eric Uptograph down in Des Moines. I want him to weigh in to me on how I should handle this deal.
I can't disagree with that, but again, these are straightforward permits. So at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the worthwhile wind solar. If you guys want to second it, that's fine. If you don't, I can't do nothing about it.
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Loebert?
No.
Stone?
No.
Smaby, aye. Now I'll make a motion to approve the permit for worthwhile wind. Can second again or we can let the motion die?
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Loebert?
No.
Stone?
No.
Smaby, aye. All right. Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it.
We'll hold on to them.
Yep.
Yeah, hang on to them. I'm gonna talk to Eric this week.
We can bring it back next week after we get some guidance from our attorneys.
That's fine.
I'm not gonna make a move until I hear from our attorney on which way to go.
Sure.
Which I think is understandable.
Can I say something? Yes. I think it's kind of curious. We have like four, between forty and fifty windmills in Brookfield Township already from previous projects. Why all of a sudden isn't it okay?
I'm not saying that it's not okay to put them in Silver Lake.
I'm saying Brookfield Township. There are between forty and fifty windmills in Brookfield Township.
I'm not saying that they're not okay to put them in there. What I'm saying is what they asked for from worthwhile wind was to go back to the original ordinance that was done in two thousand nine, which means you gotta get it. Once you get this stuff done, you gotta get a conditional use permit on the windmills. And until that process is done, if they decide you should get a conditional use permit, you can put them in Brookfield. You can put them in Heartland. You can put them wherever you want to. But until all this process gets done and the Iowa Supreme Court hears this case again, I'm not gonna let, I'm not gonna let permits go through, but the solar permits I have no problem with. I never did have a problem with solar. And that we can bring back to the table again. Do you understand that, that this thing is still in, it's being appealed to Iowa Supreme Court?
It was also my understanding that they tried to work with you on, on some different.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna call.
Better restrictions?
This isn't on the agenda.
Sorry. Okay.
If you want to talk about it on the agenda, please ask the guy on the agenda, come back, we can have that discussion.
That's my misunderstanding there.
So.
Appreciate it.
Well, I'll sit down with everyone here, but we just gotta do it the proper way. Nobody else gets to do it.
We're gonna move on right now.
Can I just ask a, what's your point of clarification? Supervisor Loebert, you had said you don't have a problem with solar. I, I want to make sure because they were split out, but the way it was worded might not have been clear. Are you voting against the crossing permit for the solar project today as well?
I am, as of today.
Okay.
I was voting against everything until I get ahold of Eric and talk to him. I want him to guide me through how to handle this thing.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
It does.
And I think I have a right to do that.
Thank you.
I mean, our lawyer's not sitting here.
Put these on the agenda for next week. Thank you.
And it says worthwhile wind. Is that worthwhile wind? Silver Lake and Bristol, Heartland and Brookfield, or is it worthwhile wind, Silver Lake and Bristol? Are they split out? Is the project no longer? Is it two different projects?
So this permit application, Rich can speak to it more too, is specifically and only for the underground conduit under four hundred and sixty-fifth street within Silver Lake Township? And it's one for wind and it's one for solar.
Gotcha.
Just to get out of the substation, correct?
Yep. Our substation location is right there.
And I can understand that. Send that stuff to me so I can send it to Eric. So he can look at it.
Yeah, you did email me that, right? I printed it out, but you can keep that. I'll print another one, but that's just the one.
I mean, I'm sitting Saturday morning calling him at home.
No, I wasn't at home.
Oh, you were fishing.
Well, kinda. No, it's fine.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, drainage, wow.
Yes. We want first claims?
Uh, sure. Take a motion to approve the drainage claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the drainage claims.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. All right, moving second. Any further discussion? Harry Knowles, if there is a aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. All right. What's next?
Twenty twenty-five assessments?
Good.
Yes.
With these, um, I'm holding off on DD seventy-two since we're currently in litigation on that one. I'm gonna wait and assess that one with the next year's. So in case we have a schedule change.
Well, this is the resolution for the claims, the, uh, assessments.
DD seventy-two assessments?
Uh.
The annual ones.
All the annual ones.
These are all the annuals, the whole.
Yeah.
List of all.
Oh, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the annual drainage assessments.
I will second that.
Good. Moving second. Any further discussion? None, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Wait a minute.
Roll call, what's resolution? The resolution. You're right.
Sorry.
All right. Roll call, Loebert?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Smaby, aye. Resolution will pass. Gotta sign this one too.
The only other thing I have is, um, just sign the minutes from DD seventy-two and DD forty-eight. You weren't at seventy-two, so I put Enos's name on that one and then that one's for forty-eight. If you want to pass that one. That should be it for me.
No work order on, uh, one for favor or whatever?
Well, it came in too late to be on the agenda, so that will be on next week's agenda.
All right.
And did you do, did you get back on DD thirty-six with that gentleman? That Woods? Where we want to do an op, some of the landowners wanted to do an open ditch.
Is that eighteen?
And engineer said we should go to thirty-six inch.
Oh, that's eighteen.
It's eighteen.
Eighteen. Yeah, BD eighteen thirty-six inch.
Aren't they still waiting? That's when I talked to.
We're still waiting on, um.
Army.
Army for engineers and permits and, yep.
Cause there's been a couple of people, uh, emailing me wanting to move ahead with the tile.
Yes, and so some people had questions. I gave them your guys' contact information.
I know Beverly was up at one before the tile. I know some of the other landowners wanted the open ditch.
Would some of them are backing off on it because they just want to get it done? They're tired of dealing with the army corps engineers and go to the bigger tile, I think. So I don't know. Check with them, see where they're at on that process.
It wasn't last week, it was the week before I talked to, I mean, they were still.
Yeah, last time I talked to them, that's because I got an email from Paul on the account and so I quickly called him and that's what he said. They're still waiting, so. And that's when he said, well, maybe we should just switch back to tile and get it done. And yes, and we're still gotta deal with army corps.
Most people I've talked to were in favor of just the tile, not the open ditch, so.
Yeah, no, I'm probably email them, but.
If you do the tile, then I don't know how much we're gonna get on the army corps, please.
Yeah.
It's replacing what's there, right? Or just making it.
Biggest thing would be the rail, biggest thing would be the railroad, of course, which it's basically an open ditch on the road right now.
Yeah.
So once we hear back from them, I have that other landowner meeting.
Yeah, plus there's five hundred to a thousand feet of open ditch here right now. They rugged this up enough last summer, all that broken tile.
And that's one of the things they're complaining about.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. It's a mess. It's growing up and, yeah, so.
Yeah, I can understand what's going on.
Anyway, yeah, just check with them, see where they're at again.
Okay. Well, yep.
Claims.
I'll hand it to you guys.
Any claims on?
Yeah, and then, um, I would like to add, I did a, um, I sent it out to you guys, the ICAP premium, just so we get it in the minutes.
Yes.
That was two hundred and thirty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars.
Hmm. I make a motion to approve the claims with the ICAP amendment to it of thirty-six thousand, whatever.
Two hundred and thirty-six.
Two hundred and thirty-six.
Yeah, I wish it was thirty-six.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, moving second. Any further discussion? Harry Knowles, if there is a aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. Report today?
That one's on the back.
Good. Report to the sheriff's board. That's all I have on all shares. Motion to approve the reports.
Motion to approve the reports?
Say a second.
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Oops, we're sending them back in.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I sent it in front. Didn't we add the signature lines now?
Just for quarter.
Just that one.
It's really official.
Hi, any payroll today? Salary changes?
Uh, two for.
Look here.
Morsure.
There you go. For Zachary Hup and Terry Dorsey, motion to approve the payroll changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll changes.
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? None, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. All right, we have alcohol. Oh, three alcohols.
Yeah, two of them, I think, for the Joe staff and the other one is for.
Diamond Joe, Diamond Joe. This must be, uh, outdoor service, uh, let's do that. What's my call again?
Oh, Art Farm.
Oh, Art Farm, okay. Yep, there it is.
I'm motion to approve all the liquor licenses.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm moving second. No further discussion, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. Okay. Okay, so, uh, the hearing date for FY twenty-six budget, budget amendment.
So. Guys are already spending money to, to do budgets, so.
Imagine it.
Uh, just the timing of the project, so we just have to get it in there so that. So I am shooting for July twenty-eighth at nine AM. And it went to the newspaper, so it should be in on Monday.
Take a motion to accept the date of July twenty-eighth for the hearing.
I'll make a motion to accept that date for the hearing.
I'll second it.
Moving second. No further discussion, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry.
Did you guys follow the email that I sent about it?
Yes.
Yes.
It's kind of long, sorry.
That, that one, yes. I read it all.
Yep. Okay, number thirteen here. Discuss the possible merging of northeast Iowa workforce development area and south center. So I don't have a whole lot of information on this. I got the email about the time I was leaving. I said I can't make the meeting, so they changed the meeting to the seventeenth. They're highly recommending this, unfortunately, another one of the deals. I know they're nice regions and let's merge them all back together. So there's some savings here, I guess, and things like that. No offices will change. I just really need another year of the information she sent me and I think it's just, probably no more after the meeting. It'll probably end back on the agenda for approval by us too, so.
I know you guys, or you had, there's grief with that other one in the transition last time.
Well, we had one during that process that totally disengaged and fell from the state and they wanted to join us. And that time there were several that said, no, you know, if they can't get along with the rules, we want nothing to do with them. This region is, this is a totally different deal. Basically, I think it's part of legislation last summer that they made that decision, just like the, I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna go back the other way.
Yeah.
Probably don't have a lot to say in it, other than you could vote, I could vote some opinion, vote no to it, but I'm guessing it's gonna pass. I think it almost needs to be an unanimous decision, but I will.
Fill us in, I guess.
Yep, keep us up to date.
We discussed it. I guess I'll be signing it in the twenty eighth, Mary Underst.
Right, most likely, yeah.
When this gets done, so. That's it. All right, you are here.
I am here. I was, I laughed, you know, Steve Harris said there's a lot of people here, so I might as well. Okay, so the opioids funds request. It is just basically the money for Prairie Ridge that we talked about at Board Health in, in February. So now I'm putting that money in our budget, so we can go ahead and send that nine thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and nine cents to Prairie Ridge for their methadone clinic as they requested. And then the other, it's a little over a thousand sum was in there, is rollover from last year. Opioid funds doesn't go, they won't go back into the general fund, so it'll just roll from one year to the next. So whatever we don't use this year, we'll have for the next fiscal year. So it never, it just, um, I guess we have to make an amendment to move that. Is that how you want to do it, Jackie? Write that extra thousand?
That's already, you got two things going on. You got budget and you got requests for opioid money. So that's already requested as opioid money, but in the budget, you have, you requested so a certain amount of money in the budget. That's what needs to be requested because that hasn't been requested for opioid ones yet technically. It was, it was approved in the budget, but it hasn't been asked for for budget for opioid, eh, oh.
So you have to request for us to release it from opioid fund to.
To your budget.
So, so that eleven hundred bucks is already good. We need the other nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
And then, and then the rest of it will be in the budget amendment and then you'll have it all covered.
Okay.
For later.
So I would like to ask for some of your motions to do what she just said.
That's okay, as long as you guys, the money is there.
Favor work side of it.
Yes, exactly.
If it has to be done right, or then it comes back.
Or it doesn't happen, yes.
So I will take a motion to, for the requested amount of, what was it, nine thousand?
Nine thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
I don't know more than that.
Eleven thousand.
The whole, okay.
It'll be everything less than eleven or whatever.
Eleven hundred and eighty.
I'll motion to approve, uh.
I'll give you, I'll do the number.
Public health, public health opioids fund request.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do we know, so now do I have to wait for the budget amendment before Prairie Ridge gets these dollars? Okay, because I have the money and, okay, we can do that. I just want, they were, they've been emailing asking, so I wanted to be able to tell them.
You're trying to get a grant?
Yes.
Just submit it to Chelsea and it'll be okay.
Okay, that was the other thing I asked him this morning. Do I said to submit a claim then? Like a, cause it's not really a bill, it's more of a donation, but you still submit a claim.
Something.
You need an official, like, document from them?
Yeah. No, just whatever.
Yep.
All right.
I'll get, I'll write it up and then who to mail it to. I had the address.
Yeah, okay, that would be good.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you guys.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Harry Knowles, if there is a aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion won't carry. Uh, building and ground, anything there? Treasury, I see boiler inspection.
Hey, Jake's got that up there.
So we gotta get that valve replaced?
Yeah, he was calling Larson's on that to get it done.
I think he was gonna get his own, he was gonna get a CO2 deal.
It's already done. I assume it's all probably done.
Most of the CO2 tested.
It's supposed to be right next to the boiler.
How about here? Do we have there?
Yeah, I'll find that room.
How about the grounds at public health? Like our, we're terrible, you know, that landscaping, every time it rains, it's in the basement now. Do we?
I thought that was gonna be in.
We haven't got that fixed, he hasn't got that done.
No, no, no. He hasn't been back. He hasn't done anything around here.
Okay, I know, I mean, I know he was, he was behind.
He hasn't billed us either, but.
Right.
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 He was behind because it rained, everybody's behind.
Exactly.
I'll reach out to him again.
Do you have CO2 testers for you?
Cause that would be the priority over there.
I will check that.
The smoke detectors are CO2.
Oh, right, but not the, but not, they're talking about a valve, are you talking about?
No.
Oh, yeah, we have all our, all our smoke. Our smoke detectors are CO2, they're very loud and annoying, and when he tests somebody.
They work.
Yep, exactly. Now Mark has done a great job of actually trimming all the hedges there at Public Health to keep them, cause he, we're keeping, so he brings in his little trimmer and he trims everything off, so we appreciate that, thank you, Mark.
I couldn't see past the. Couldn't see the window.
Couldn't even see past it.
Alright, well, it's gonna get fixed. Have to be patient.
That, yep, yep.
Alright, the uh, the generators, essentially, the, the information that we got from Ron's plumbing, heating and electrical on that, um, he gave you the options of what it would cost to replace the one here, or um, if you didn't wanna do that, you could install the um, monitoring devices, monitor them cellularly. That's pretty minimal cost on that. I think that probably would be a good deal to um, put those on. If you didn't replace the one here, to do that for here and the one over there. Obviously, we're not gonna replace that one after just putting the repairs into that one now.
Did you get all the parts for that one over there?
They did, finally. It's, it's back, back on, 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 in service, yeah. Yeah, that's in the uh. Yep, I sent uh Jackie the invoice for that. It would come up to, what was it, just over four thousand, I think.
That's not bad, forgets another.
It was enough, but it, it, we found one or two problems, and then when they got it running again, they found another problem. But luckily, they found it then while it was still running, runnable, because it was inside the front timing cover and stuff, and they said they've had other, those similar engines, when they go, it explodes, it takes out the whole front end of the engine.
As far as the cellular monitoring, who's gonna be doing the cellular monitoring?
Um, so they talked about, well, it could be, but they have um, in the, they can do it, and there's a they charge a hundred dollar a year for the dealer monitoring.
What are they monitoring?
Nothing right now, probably, other than.
If an alarm would ever come up on it.
That would come up.
We don't have a monitoring system right now.
But I mean, there's people here.
Right, but they would monitor, like, if it throws a code or something, they would show you right away, that, and.
Before it breaks down further.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
And doesn't somebody look at it every?
Month.
Once a month.
Every month.
And he was checking, he was doing the checks every month, and that's when it was.
But then it runs, it runs a weekly exercise thing, so if something, and the monitoring thing could go on there. And even that way, if the power goes out, I mean, we could do the, I mean, it could cellularly monitor, we could monitor it too. That way, if power goes out, it would alert, like me or Shannon, that the power is out and the generator is running. That way, she knows that her vaccines are protected.
I have a, I have a, um, I have a, we, I purchased a couple years ago, actually, it's like what they use on the hog confinement units. So they have for the plugins there if the power goes out, but it's only on the one plug, cause I, that's where the COVID vaccines were, so.
Yeah, you know the power went out, but you don't know.
That's right. All I know is that the power went out and I need to get it moved, but not right.
You would still have that, and with in addition to knowing that the generator started.
Yeah, we don't know for sure that the power came back.
Next week's gonna happen later on the weekend, it ain't gonna happen.
They did say too, uh, this Michael talked about, that they need to make a new service contract for the next three years, he's gonna be in contact with us.
This one's fourteen years old, how long do they normally last? I don't have the faintest idea.
You know, if they never run for long periods of time, and if all they do is exercise, they probably last.
And he's, let's see, so. Yes, lasted fourteen years, but he said on there what it uh.
I've seen them twenty, twenty-five years.
Yeah.
They have their repairs.
He said it's, it was a two thousand, it was two thousand and eleven with just not that many hours on it.
Kind of like vehicles.
Yep.
And sometimes we know that, you know, AJ, you know, stuff like from the fire service, it's not always the, the hours, sometimes it is the age, but.
So they don't wanna be monitoring these too, the system, cause we put it, like, you got the ones out of the towers, how do you monitor those? Just look at it once in a while?
We just do the yearly checks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean.
And those are a little bit different beast, those are more of like a home standby generator, they're smaller stuff. But usually, uh, Schomburg will call you if there's a power outage or something there, plus you have along with those, you have battery backup, so if the generator for some reason wouldn't, wouldn't start, you have, you have several hours of battery backup to get something out there.
So you've got a variety there, that somebody isn't monitoring that after.
Yeah, those, those out there are probably in the, I don't know, I would say anywhere from the seventeen to twenty-two KW range. For those.
I would assume.
That's what I would say. Smile away.
Say, I hope so.
Yeah, that's right, that's exactly what I heard.
Okay, and where these, like this one here is an eighty for the courthouse, an eighty KW, and the one over there is probably the forty-five KW range. Um, you know, yeah, I, my personal opinion, I wouldn't be in a big hurry to replace this one. Um, if we do have a, a situation where it fails, first of all, there's, I mean, yeah, you need power to run the thing, but it's only, it's a standby generator, so as long as mine power is in service, you're fine. Um, we do have other options in the county that, you know, I can bring in a.
Right.
We've got two great, big diesel generators, we can bring them in, we can get electrician here, we can.
Yeah, because it is just the backup generator, it's nothing like, unless power was gonna be out for a long time, and if it was, our vaccines were gonna be moved immediately anyways to where there's.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we had a situat- or we had a solution for that over there. Um, but yeah, if the courthouse was, you know, for some reason Northwood was without power, gonna be without power for a long time, and that generator failed, we can give them a solution there, so.
You have the solution, but you gotta know that it's not working.
Right.
I, I don't think the cellular additions would be that bad, at least those two.
And, you know, they, a hundred dollar monitoring, for them to monitor. We try it and see what they like, if, if after the first year or whatever, seems like we can monitor just as well ourselves, we can just do that too.
So, Mark, would that be like, so they'd have each one of our cell phones, and then so if there was?
I, I think that, I don't know, we'd have to learn a little bit more about it, but I think it's probably more of an app that's on your phone.
Okay, okay.
Or if, if there's a notifier in there, and it'll call your number and tell you.
That's what I have right now, Total Connect app. It's for the ones we have the vaccines, that it loses power.
I see there's an app for everything, though.
I know, yeah.
Normally, you'd get a, there's a call out list of.
I would think, like, kind of a.
You'd get some sort of notification that if it's, your main power is in and your generator is running, you'll get that kind of notification.
Or you can go on there and, and look at the status of your generator anytime if you want, and I'm so inclined to.
My guess would be if we had that on there, we would've got a quicker warning on what.
Yeah, we would've said there was a, instead of, what was it, cam sensor failure.
So for six hundred bucks a unit, we can do the monitoring.
So is that a motion?
I make a motion that we put the monitors on each one of them to the tune of six hundred bucks.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Moving second, there's no further discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry.
Alright.
So is that annual or?
The six hundred dollars.
Monthly fee or anything?
There's a monthly fee, there's an annual fee of a hundred bucks, right, for them to monitor.
Yeah.
So.
And then the six hundred or?
Costs six hundred to put the sensors on, each unit.
Five hundred, seven thirteen each.
Each unit?
Each unit.
Yes, twelve hundred. There is a two hundred dollar service fee to install that too, so.
Oh, okay.
Your front cost is mostly.
Make that part motion too.
Motion's getting bigger.
Yeah. Anyway, cover it.
Making a motion, I'm, I'm just putting it in, so. Mark can give her that.
I will. I'll make a motion for two monitors at five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and some cents apiece. A hundred dollars a year monitoring payment, and two hundred dollars for installation to put the monitors on. Does that cover everything now?
Here's two.
Okay, that's what I read too.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll go again then.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving second, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion will carry. Alright, is uh Melissa, is there any more on maintenance in general and anything?
How's the air conditioner units going? Did, they're just behind AJ?
Uh, you don't, they haven't been here yet. They, they were here, but they didn't get them.
They're not clean.
Okay.
So we don't have ours on yet.
They're probably behind.
That time of year for them, so. I'll, I'll reach out again to see what they're thinking, or whether, if they've got a timing.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is Melissa on this morning? Melissa?
Yep. Uh, last week I hosted Debbie Durham from IVA, and we toured around Lake Mills and Northwood. And then um, we sat through a presentation from the Historical Society about Hotel Winifred. And she gave them some great ideas on um, where to get some more uh, funding to move along with their second, their phase two, so. They, they received the Catalyst Grant, so that's for phase one, which is the first floor, and then phase two will be the second, third floor. Um, and then I have, I'm working today uh, for the childcare thing, that's we don't know what's going on with that, so. And then we're moving the exec board meeting to the twenty-eighth at one o'clock. I don't know where, but just assume it's at the office unless you hear differently, and Jackie, I'll send you the agenda as soon as I know.
Okay.
What, what childcare thing are you talking about, sorry?
That's for Winnebago and Hancock County, it's a statewide grant for nonprofit childcare centers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then is there, what, is there a supervisor that could come to the advisory board meeting on Wednesday? Anybody? Don't jump, at the chance.
I'm gonna be in another state.
Well, it'd be hard for you, man. Is it Wednesday night?
Yep.
Infernal, right?
I'm hoping so, I haven't gotten ahold of everybody there yet.
What time is it?
Uh, it's usually at six, people get there at five forty-five.
Okay, um, yeah, let me know, I should be able to make it.
Okay.
Pretty, don't think I have anything going on that night. That I know of.
You're not a golfer, Mark?
Nope. Nope, so. There's nothing on my calendar right now, but I have been gone two weeks, so who knows? But. I should be able to make it.
Alright.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Well, I'll be texting everybody to make sure we have quorum.
Sounds good. I'll put it down.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright. Uh, yeah, water and wastewater?
That'd be you.
That'd be you.
You'll be, you'll be getting a little bit of an update here probably this week. Of what's been going on. Gonna be needed.
Right. Good.
So.
Yep.
Alright.
And I just wanna make mention too, the, you get a lot of nice calls, that things are moving forward with the sanitary and part of it too, so thank you very much. For doing that, that is.
Caught up on the sewers and subjects and.
Yep, they're getting things taken care of, so thank you.
They were just a little behind.
Yeah. Alright, department heads, anything there today? Sheriff?
Well, maybe you guys have heard or not heard, that we lost it that day, last week.
Oh, didn't hear that.
Send email, that I saw, unless you did.
I didn't send any email, no. Um, so, not only are we trying to fill the first spot, now we got another spot to fill, so.
That's right.
There's another department?
Yeah. I do have one kid going down for an MPI this week, so. Moving forward in that first position, but. So, other than that.
Seems like it's.
Well, the body cams and the incards are moving forward too.
Awesome.
And you have a national lineup, that's a great thing, I'm very excited.
Have that, we're trying to have that.
He's gonna have that.
When is that?
August fifth.
Okay, cool.
First time we've ever done it, so.